Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting. It's actually a school budget public hearing on Tuesday, May 26th at 6:30. So I'll pass it right to Dr. Cron.
Thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen. And normally, normally when I present a budget and have the public hearing, I'm presenting a PowerPoint of anywhere from 15 to 20 slides. This is a very different year and I'm sharing just one slide. This is a single slide presentation. It pretty much tells the entire story where we are right now. The first thing I want to start in the top left-hand corner. This is where we were in March, back when the governor released his budget. We were the recipients of $1.6 million in increase due to the Student Opportunities Act. It brought tremendous amount of additional local support to the town. And with the 70/30 split, that left our number, right here I'm pointing at, the $26,928,952. So that was our budget number after the governor's number was released. Of course, that is not our entire budget. Our entire budget is actually over $30 million. I'm pointing over here. We make up the rest of the money that funds the school budget from revolving accounts and from circuit breaker and from grants. The story is that we are operating under an assumption that we are going to be cut by 10% from the state. So the town, the town's deficit as a result of that is $2 million, $2,590,000 is the town's deficit because of the 10% reduction in local aid that we are all operating under. That is, leaves us with a $4 million, a $1.4 million deficit. And when it translates through the extended costs of not collecting funds for revolving, so not being able to collect revolving account funds, that leaves our total budget deficit at $2,468,180. That, that is a budget number that we are trying to close. That is our gap. So we've started working on closing that gap. And we've started by eliminating the new positions that we had been planning on adding next year due to the Student Opportunities Act. That's $469,000. There's a math program that we had planned to purchase for the elementary school. We're going to put that off a year. Transportation is an area where we anticipate some savings. We know we're going to cut at least the two buses that we added last year, but there are also some opportunities to perhaps look at transportation more carefully as far as costs go. It's very expensive. And given social distancing guidelines, our transportation budget could easily be doubled if all of a sudden we are forced to go one kid per seat. So currently we run 11 buses. That would require us to run 22 buses at a cost of approximately $80,000 per bus. So it's a big, it's a big, big problem, but an area where we may be able to save some money. And then finally, to close that gap, we'll be looking at some staffing cuts. But again, our budget as of now, this is, I'd like to say it's our worst-case scenario. I would like to say that, that there's some relief. What we're hoping is going to come through in the form of legislation in support to local towns. We're hoping that they continue to think about the budgeting of towns along the lines of the Student Opportunities Act. Because again, Rockland was one of 35 communities across the Commonwealth who are due to receive more than 1.5 million. So we were really due to make out well, to do very well at the state level this year. So I'm hoping that some of that holds on and that we actually begin to realize that funding. Now, we won't know the actual budget, the actual budget number until the middle of August. So there is, there is no vote required of the school committee at this time. The town, the Board of Selectmen presented this $25,521,514 figure at their last Board of Selectmen meeting. No reason to expect that that will change. There will be a town meeting in June, on June 22nd. And following June 22nd, we will begin to discuss in greater detail what our strategies are for closing the funding gap that we have right now. But that is the overview of the FY '21 budget. I'd like to think of this as a beginning and not a depressing reality. It is a depressing reality, but it's also a time when we're either going to sink or swim. We're either going to get better or we're going to crawl under a rock. And we're not crawling under any rocks. So we are going to, we are going to forge ahead and plan for the worst and hope for the best. And that's what this budget does. And I am extremely grateful to Jane Hackett, who's been instrumental in this work, and Colleen Forlizzi as well. And I really want to thank Doug Lapp and Biz at Town Hall and Jen for their communication and their support through this. I want to say we are, we are working in glove with Town Hall. And Town Hall and schools are working very closely with the state. We want to get our hands on those numbers as soon as humanly possible so that we really know what our reality is. But I think we are in a very good position, given the crappy circumstances that we're all under. So that is an overview. I don't know if anyone has any questions that I can try to answer.
Do we know what we're thinking? Transportation-wise, how many buses we would need bare minimum if we drop to the bare minimum required?
We're, we're working on that, Mike. That's one of the things that we're looking at. We would have to bus K to six outside of two miles. So some of it will be speculating, but we are, we are working on that, what that figure would be. Because that would be a choice that the school committee will eventually have to make. You know, are we funding buses or are we funding, you know, something else?
Right. Yeah, no, I just, I would, obviously, I would prefer to cut more stuff that's not educational, right? I would prefer to drop down to the absolute bare minimum of buses. You know, amongst other things that I'm sure we could figure out. So that would be my, my thought on that, you know?
Yeah, we're, we're with you on that, Mike.
Okay.
Yep. Anything else?
I have no questions. Anyone else have any questions?
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay.
Need a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn this meeting?
Again?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's the four of us. Thank you. Okay, well, in that meeting, like we said, now we'll start the regular school committee meeting for Tuesday, May 26th. We're first up, the acceptance of the minutes for the meeting of May 12th, 2020.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Garafalo's abstaining, he wasn't here. Nothing under communications and audience? He's well overdue his time. So we're appreciative that even he's here tonight.
I was like, you know, it's funny now that we have the data, I was like, oh, it's actually going to end.
Never say never, Mike.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Hang on. I'm glad you have your hat on. Hang on to your hat. Nothing under communication, nothing under audience. So we'll move to superintendent's report. Dr. Cron?
Thank you. So I'm sharing my screen again. I can find my screen. That would be nice.
You went bye-bye.
I went bye-byes, right?
Yep.
There we go. Let's switch out of that one and go to this one.
Went into the bit bucket.
You broke it.
What I'd like to use my superintendent's report today is to put out some pretty big things for all of us to be thinking about. And I want you to know what this, what the senior leadership team is working on. Again, as I said during the budget presentation, we are trying to prepare for the fall. We are trying to prepare for the summer. We have summer responsibilities in special education. We normally run summer camps. So we are working at all of these things. So one of the, I'd like to talk to you about some of the things that the senior leadership team is working on. We're reviewing key considerations impacting decisions on reopening schools. Here I will discuss summer programming options to support continuity of learning. And I will discuss considerations for fall learning scenarios to address student learning loss and social emotional needs. So at first, I just want to point out that this is being, this, this plan is constantly moving and it's, and it's being worked on. I feel like my, my primary job is to communicate with Town Hall, with the principals, with teachers, but to keep everyone on the same page. So there's been a lot of cooperation going on, a lot of work with the principals, with Linda Miniglia, Mark Shum and Tim Wells. Also, we've been working very closely with the Rockland Teachers Association so that they are aware and informed and so that they have input into our, into our plans. And also with the school committee and the Board of Selectmen and Town Hall. We want to state emphatically that stakeholder engagement in, in our plan for returning to school is going to be very important. We're going to want to hear from parents and from kids and from everyone about their thoughts on returning to school in the fall. We are drafting a plan together and we are continuing to engage with the community and we're going to make that a priority. Returning to school, first of all, is going to require us to have a strong communication plan and consistent expectations across the district. It's going to require us to have a support model in place that can identify and respond to students' academic behavioral and wellness needs. We're going to need our teachers to begin to be able to differentiate even remotely, which is a challenge. It's hard enough to do in the classroom. It's even more difficult to do remotely. And we're going to need to come up with policies that support staff who have health or personal issues that would prevent them from returning to work. Some state policy considerations. A state-level task force is developing guidelines for reopening schools. And we hope to hear back from them, hear back from them in early June. Dates and conditions for lifting school closure would be part of their guidance. Health and safety considerations. Heightened sanitation and health procedures are expected. And this may be, may bring some budget, may have some budget implications. We need PPEs, personal protective equipment, thermometers for schools. We may need additional custodial staffing if we're talking about sanitizing cafeterias after every lunch and the types of cleaning that has been being discussed. We may need additional custodial staffing. We may need additional cleaning supplies. Here's just something to think about, the impact on the classroom. If we were to follow current social distancing guidelines, we'd be looking at classrooms that are approximately 12 students or less. So it's another thing to consider. Transportation. If we were, currently we use 11 buses. If we were to assign one student per seat, we would reduce capacity by approximately 50% for the middle school and the high school and 67% for the elementary. So that would increase hypothetically, our number of buses from 11 to 22, and that's at $80,000 per bus. We need to schedule additional time for bus cleaning. So we need to take factor that into our timing for busing runs. We'll need personal protective equipment for drivers. And we, we should very strongly consider reducing bus service to the state requirements, which is K to six outside of two miles. Now, this has been a discussion we will come back to for sure regarding busing. But just to remember, we have always erred on the side of busing because we want our students in school. And our concern is that our highest need students are the ones who would not make it to school if it weren't for the buses. So that has been our, our thinking until now. But I think we're going to have to think, make some very difficult decisions. And one of the recommendations that I would be making is that we strongly consider reducing bus service to state minimum. Technology considerations. We need to continue to enhance our technology infrastructure. Because we could close, even if we came back in the fall, if a case breaks out, we have to close again. So our technology, we can see, is incredibly important. It's more important today than it was before March 13th. We need to ensure that every student has access to a device. And here's the more important part, perhaps, connectivity to the internet. Now, our teachers have been, been tracking this down and working with families one at a time to get them connected. But it's very important that the public know that internet, right now, Xfinity is offering free internet. There's no reason for any home in Rockland to be without internet. So if you know of a family that is without internet, send me an email so that I can help them be connected. We need to evaluate our digital curriculum tools to identify gaps and opportunities. Sorry, that went by really fast. Some changes to instructional priorities that will require staff learning and preparation. We need to shift our priorities in professional development to develop, to support our teachers and administrators because there's going to be a lot of changes to our curriculum. And we also need to be considering our social emotional and blended learning curriculum. We need to update our PD plan to use virtual and blended professional delivery to ensure that our staff has access to critical content relevant, relevant to their position. We need to consider calendar adjustments to provide PD days during which students engage in self-paced learning at home. So for example, we may have, when we return, we may begin with a professional development day or two with staff to solely focus on remote learning when students are at home at the same time working on self-paced work. Summer programs and supports, just some initial thoughts. Think, we're thinking now about what are we going to do in June, July and August? We're going to continue to provide resources to help our students engage in digital learning, including internet safety and data privacy. We're going to deepen our partnerships with area and regional offices to extend childcare, health and social services for short and long-term needs. These are our, our social workers, our, our adjustment counselors in all of our buildings, our Free Leahy and her team. We're going to provide virtual professional learning opportunities for teachers and administrators. We're going to avoid face-to-face summer programs to allow, this is again, initial thoughts as I'm talking to the senior leadership team. There's, the staff is working very, very hard. The kids are working very, very hard. There's a lot of great work going on, but I think they're going to need a break this summer. I just want to put that out there. Special education summer options. Our special education summer school dates this year are July 6th through August 6th. At this time, we plan on this being a completely remote special education summer program at this time. We have two preschool programs, five elementary programs, three middle school programs, two high school programs, as well as offering OT speech, PT and ABA therapists, CBA as well as tutorials. So all of those programs will be going on, but again, it will be remote over the summer. High school summer school, they plan to use a company called EduSeer. It's $100 per course. I don't think that Dr. Harrison is anticipating a high number of failures this year. Perhaps this, the number of failures would be a little bit lower than in the past. But, so we're hoping that demand for summer school is a little bit light this year. Moving on to planning for the fall of 2020. Need to include first and foremost that we can ensure a safe learning environment for students and staff. Secondly, we need to provide options for students and staff who are unable to return to work or school. We need to comply with social distancing requirements from the state. And we need to address continued access and connectivity issues that our students are having. We need to provide staff with adequate time and training to prepare for a new school year. And we need to make these decisions as soon as possible so that we can communicate to families and so that families can plan. And again, we want to involve all stakeholder groups in the planning process. Social emotional wellness is an area that I think schools have a particular responsibility for and that are, we are in a particularly good place to help kids and families during this time. So it's very important that we continue our systematic use of evidence-based practices for social emotional learning supports for students. We're going to need to revise our curriculum to prioritize, you know, high, high content knowledge and skills, what we call high-impact objectives. So, and skills as well as this portrait of graduate that the high school is using as a guide. Need to modify our instructional delivery models to prepare students and teachers for agile deployment of remote learning at any time. Again, the current guidelines from the CDC state that if you have one who has a case of COVID-19 building, that the building should close. They're, they list in their, in their guidelines two to five days. But I've heard other guidelines that have been more like two weeks. So will, will we be closing a building for two weeks right out of the gate? If someone comes down with COVID or will we be closing for two to five days? We'll make those decisions as we come up. But regardless, we need to be poised and ready to jump into remote learning again at any time. So our teachers have, have a lot of work to do in that regard because it's, again, you're, you're teaching now remotely. It's a very different, different situation. We need to ensure that our special education students receive their services. And we need to implement our targeted intervention model, MTSS, to ensure readiness to respond to heightened student academic, social emotional and behavioral needs. So here are, I'm going to present you with a couple of different scenarios. This is a scenario where we're starting the school year virtually, where we are told we are not allowed to return to school in the fall. Again, could be one of the scenarios we are facing. If that were the case, we have talked about focusing the start of school activities on community building, orientations for the buildings, especially those who are moving, and establishing our virtual learning routines. That is going to be very important. Establishing virtual learning routines. Math class, I'm thinking, will take place at a certain time, on a certain day, and it will help folks organize their time and their... We need to provide enhanced distance learning resources and make some decisions about our platforms. I believe we're, we're settling quite firmly on Google and all of the Google platforms. But some, some teachers are using different, different platforms. And I think we're going to want to bring everyone under one umbrella to make it easier for the kids. So technology, connectivity and self-paced curriculum. And we need to consider reviewing instructional schedules. So we may be looking at a schedule that looks absolutely nothing like what we have today. And again, expand our community partnerships to support students with distance learning, including childcare services. Here's the second scenario. We return to school, but we socially distance. Regulations may require serving select students that must require face-to-face support. So we may be told by DESI that we need to prioritize our special education students and our English language learner students. We're expecting that that may happen. We may need to implement an alternating, alternating day schedule. Perhaps something that looks like the kids come to school on Monday and Wednesday. And then the other, the other half of the school comes to school on Tuesday and Thursday. And then perhaps Friday is a catch-up remediation day. But I'm just throwing out scenarios that, that are being considered.
Yeah. How do you do that when you have two kids in different schools? Or if you're, like my family who has to take care of a friend's kids because they're essential workers that work second shift and overnight? Like, how do you coordinate that? This is just...
So many scenarios.
Yeah, it's huge. It's, it, those, those are very real problems, Mike. Absolutely. Then scenario three, where there, there, there are going to be those that are not able to return. So how are we going to support those students and staff? So at the high school, perhaps an online campus, and we do have edgenuity. The middle school and elementary may look to enrollment with an online provider. We may look at grouping students who are unable to return into online sections and making classes that are mixed with both face-to-face and remote learning. We need to prepare for future closures, as I mentioned already. How, how will we move immediately into distance learning mode? We must have a tight communication network for regular updates. I am very, very thankful. I want to thank my administration. I want to thank the school committee for your communication. I think that this is the key, that we need to make sure, if everyone knows what everyone else is doing, as much as humanly possible, I think we will be best, we will be better off. So I've been very happy with our communication so far between Town Hall, the schools. I've been very happy with our communication with the union and the teachers. And principals are doing a remarkable job motivating their staff and keeping their kids on task. So a lot of great things happening, but we need to keep that communication network a front and center priority. It needs to be organized by school and by district. For example, when we're going to deliver news, it's always very important to me that school committee knows about it first, then the teachers know about it second. The teachers have to know about it before anyone else, then the public. And I feel very strongly about the particular order in communication. And I think it helps people know. So that if you're a school committee member and you're standing on the soccer field and someone tells you something that I didn't tell you, my phone should ring. You know, and I, because I expect, I want to keep you guys informed so that you're not surprised. We need to build routines using one-to-one devices and blended learning within daily instruction at all grade levels and courses. Now, I've mentioned this a few times in different ways, but I think regardless of how we return to school in the fall, a good portion of our time is going to be really strengthening our remote and blended learning skills as teachers and as learners and as families. So we have, we have work to do there. And finally, continue to develop and expand curriculum that ensures instruction is aligned. In conclusion, just to keep everything in perspective, as of this morning, 7,594 individuals have tested positive for COVID-19 and 513 individuals have died. That's Plymouth County alone. This is a health crisis. It's not an educational crisis, Colleen Forlizzi likes to say. But this is definitely a very serious health crisis. We are making multiple plans for reopening the school in the fall. But the key word here is safely, safely. I will support plans that will allow staff and students to return safely. Organized, organized communication will remain a priority. Again, being, being organized in our communication, I think, is very important. We're a large organization with a lot of part, moving parts. And especially with all the budget things that are going on right now, it's very important that we continue our communication. And again, thank you, thank you, thank you, because you guys have been great. And, and I feel like we are connected. And finally, we are preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. But we are preparing for the worst. And the information that we're giving you is what we have to date. And when we get newer information, I will share it with you. But I thought it was important that I take the time at this meeting to let you know that these are the things that the senior leadership team is thinking about and working on. We've had communication with the union about this and again, with the school committee. But I think it's important that the public understand the scope and the magnitude of these changes and how complex this will be in the fall. But we will make it happen and, and we will be fine. But it is going to be challenging. I don't know if anyone has any questions. That was a lot.
I have, I have a quick...
Wait, wait, one at a time. Mr. Mills?
Is that, is there, are we going to ask each family to check in during the summer? Like weekly or every day or some way to make sure everything, that we know that...
Over the summer? Well, I don't know. We talked, I mean, we've talked about wanting to give people a break. So we have to consider that. But we do have special education programs that are running.
Right.
But I suspect, Tom, that this summer is, we are going to be busy reaching out to families to see who has internet, who doesn't have internet.
Right, right. Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're definitely, we're making a list and we're checking it twice. I'm not trying to be corny, but I will tell you that principals are looking at lists of students and who doesn't have it, who has it, who's logged in, who isn't logged in.
That's what, I guess that's what I mean, is, you know, is we got to build a foundation. And the foundation is part of that technology, that all that technology plan for the remote learning. You know, I mean, even if they get on and say, you know, a couple of times a week, they just check in, they send somebody an email or just that they checked in, that they were on, that this, this still around.
Yeah, yeah. No, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. We will, we will keep that in mind.
Mr. Garafalo, thanks for waiting.
Mr. Garafalo, thanks for waiting.
Yeah, no problem. I, I got a couple of things. One, what, what have, how are we handling IEP meetings right now?
We're just beginning, we're just beginning, um, remote IEP meetings. So the state has approved and allowed us to begin that process. But we're doing it very slowly. We're doing it very slowly because this is very delicate ground. We're talking federal law, um, and everyone is sort of moving slowly into the, into the IEP process.
I, I've done 10 of them this week. And the biggest challenge on those is that usually the teachers and the, uh, you know, special ed, any, any, any of the, any of the school staff can get together. It's getting the families online.
Right. Now, are we conveying to the families that this is the process going forward?
Yeah, Linda Miniglia has two letters. I believe she's already communicated. And, and I just saw two letters this morning that I think are due to go out that is explaining also.
All right. And then my, my only other thing is here that, that scares me is, you know, the schools might not return to any sort of normalcy, but other people. So now we're going to have people who are no longer going to be working from home. They're going to be back at their jobs. And now we're playing a game of what, what to do, remote, online, in-person, split this, split that. You know, a lot of this falls down to the state. But, you know, we're talking, we're going to have groups of kids that have no daycare, have no school to go to. And their parents are working. Truthfully, we probably have a lot of those who are already dealing with that. But it's going to be on a grander scale. You know, that there's only so much you can do. I mean, I'm fortunate. I work from home anyways. I do have to balance my schedule when I have to go see people and stuff. But there's people who don't typically work from home and they're now working from home and they're trying to deal with their kids. And education, those parents are going back to work at some point. And if, if we're in a spot where the schools are operating on off, on off, that, that's going to be a problem. And I, I just think that's something that needs to be factored and worked out. I mean, listen, I know I'm borrowed time here. I have less than a month, but, you know, that, that concerns me.
Absolutely. Concerns me too, Mike. I, I, I'm waiting, I'm anxiously awaiting guidance from the state, as are all of my colleagues. They have a group together, about 25 individuals. It's a good group. I have a lot of confidence in the people who are part of that group, but we need that guidance and we need it soon so we can start to have these conversations. I will tell you that in looking at what's happening in other countries, um, they are, they are trying different things. Some are only bringing, they, some brought back elementary first. Um, Germany brought back their high school kids first. They are coming back to half-sized classes. They are running alternate schedules. They're, they're trying things out. So we will have at least some examples of what's working and not working in other countries. Um, but yeah, these are, these are very difficult scenarios, Mike. No doubt about it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think the high school is the easiest one to maneuver, really, because you're dealing with older kids.
Right.
You know, you almost could, you could mimic a college style where your, you know, X amount of kids are signing up for classes, Monday, Wednesday, Friday for that class. And then Tuesday, you know, you can, you can maneuver that with high school kids.
Right.
But it's the elementary and the middle school that I think is going to be the, the biggest issue.
Also, just to say, like, the opposite of that, would you not have the high school come back because they can stay home alone by themselves?
Which is exactly right.
And middle school and then use all of the buildings to keep the social distance protocols.
Right.
Place still, but middle school and elementary and kindergarten still go back.
Right. Right. And, and some schools are even going to like freshman go, go to Monday, you know, sophomores on Tuesday. And Wednesday and Thursday, you know, seniors.
Or I wonder too, mornings and afternoons, right? Then the parents have a set schedule Monday through Friday rather than random days.
Right.
I think it's important to point out that this isn't a snow day. So we don't call it whether we're out for a day or a week. And it's just, we're done and we're sitting at home waiting for the snow to clear. That if we end up going back and then calling it, that you're going to switch right into, um, remote learning.
Right.
That, that we still have that 180 days. Do we need to figure out if they're going to be fixing the 180 days or are we stuck with that? And how quick are we expected to shift right into remote learning? So if you're, you know, to, tomorrow, they're not going to have school for the rest of the week. We need to pick up tomorrow morning, 8:00 AM, right into your remote learning.
Right.
So I think this whole thing is a lot of conversation. Um, and Colleen Porlizzi is right, this is a medical pandemic and we're lucky we're in great hands. But it is a lot of conversation to come along.
I, I did have a thought as, as Emily was pointing out, having, you know, kindergarten and, and elementary and stuff. Correct me if I'm wrong. I might be because, you know, you forget stuff. Kindergarten as a requirement. That's not gospel, like first, second, third, fourth grade.
Right.
Right. Like you don't have to go to kindergarten.
First grade is mandatory.
Right. So push come to shove, kindergarten is something we don't have to worry about. As an option.
Except that it's great to have them start that little, Mike. It's great to get them into education. You don't know what they're learning at home.
Right. No, I, I, I'm totally with you on that. I'm just saying, at all options, at all costs, you know, we have to look at everything. Believe me, I, I think in kindergarten and full-day kindergarten is extremely important. And we've seen that with MCAS scores of the kids who were the first full-day kindergarten kids, you know, over what years passed it done. I'm just looking at it as an all of our options here, you know? We, we got stuff we have to think about that we never should have to think about, truthfully.
Right.
Right, right. You're right. This is sort of a down the pike and we have not, you know, we're trying to steer without a map.
Yeah, we have to use all our assets judicially.
Right.
Right.
I, I don't actually love the fact that my terms up in the middle of this because I just feel like that's, you know, kind of crummy. Like, you know, when decisions were made, none of this was on the horizon.
Right.
Right. Well, I'm glad you heard, Mike.
Got one more. You're right.
One more, one more for us. Are we all done with comments on this? Thank you, Dr. Kron.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. That was thorough. And I think it's good to point out too, that these are all the things that you're sort of knocking around. Um, it's great for the public to hear that these are thoughts and, um, to know that we're not just sort of riding out until June 12th. Um, that you really are already tossing around the summer and the fall. Um, these are normal, everyday things for us, the school committee to hear about. But I like that you like to keep everyone in the know. So thank you for that. And thank you for your team because I know they're not just sitting back either. More than not do I hear that you're in a meeting with the admin. So that's much grateful that we have that team together. Moving on to reports, financial reports for April, school department, high school's student activities, middle school student activities, and the daycare.
What motion to accept?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's the four of us. Moving on to monthly reports for March and April. We have art with Mrs. Thompson, computer technology with Mr. Wells, English five through eight with Mrs. Cook, family consumer science, technology with Mrs. Folsom, math five through eight with Mr. McDonald's, math nine through 12 with Mr. Cassick Randy, music with Mr. Piazza, physical education and health with Mrs. Folsom, radio TV station with Mr. Cable Murphy, social studies with Mr. McAllister, the middle school with Mrs. Shipper, Mr. Griffin, foreign language with Mrs. Shaughnessy, science with Mrs. Armstrong, library with Mrs. Kemp, and the dean, Ms. Gaiman.
15 motions to accept?
Twice.
15 seconds.
All those in favor? Hi, that's the four of us.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Regarding the Chromebooks that were lent out, are students going to be keeping those for the summer or are they going to be returned at the end of the year?
That's a good, that's a good question. So I, I posed that question to Tim Wells last week. And we are currently making a plan to recollect the Chromebooks for the summer. There, the reason, the reason being, we've deployed about 575 Chromebooks as of today. That's in addition to what we already had out. Our plan for one-to-one in the fall, we're looking at leasing units. So for the sake of starting out fresh, well-organized, in good form, rather than leaving those units out. Um, some of them are from the middle school, some are from the high school, some are newer, some are older. Our plan is to collect them over the summer, um, redeploy first thing in the fall. That's our plan right now.
Yeah, you, yeah, you want to check them all out to make sure, yeah, what's going on with them.
That's a great question, Emily.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thanks then. Completed fundraisers, we have three tonight. Esten Pax, McDonald's night raised $598.44. They also raised in the cookie dough sales, $3,998.15. And their book fair for $2,800, $803.17. So those were awesome fundraisers. For all of this happened, it's good that they made their money. And thank you for the PAC for working so hard to get that money in.
Seconds.
All those in favor? Aye. Thanks, guys. That's the four of us.
Quick question. Did, um, could you all see my slides when I was presenting?
Yes.
I couldn't.
I couldn't.
Oh, you missed presenting the, the, you first slides that you had.
You didn't see my, you didn't see my returning to school slides?
No.
No.
Okay. I just got it.
I thought it was just me. I was too shy to say, I can't see that. That's why I was speaking notes like a maniac.
Yeah. I just got a text from one of our many watchers, one of our many viewers, who said they can't see your slides. So, sorry about.
All right. I texted you and didn't, and texted it, didn't press send.
That's okay.
Oh, I thought you were the, the one viewer, Jane.
I was asleep by the time I got to slide 12, but I'll post it. People can look at it.
Yeah, post them. That'd be fun.
Okay. So we're moving on to the FY 20, FY 21 budget. Dr. Kron, back to you.
Yes. Um, I pretty much went over it at the start of the school, at the start of this meeting. So I don't have anything to add. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Jane, did you want to add anything?
I just want to say that FY 20 is landing. Um, we have, we just issued the summer payroll. We have two payrolls left. And we're working hard to get everything closed up and as easy as possible to work, close out the year with the town.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jane. You really are working hard and we appreciate your time and effort of everything that you're doing. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you. It's a great team.
I miss your whiteboard, I will say.
Not as much as I do.
Plus, it's not in your house.
Yeah, you should see my basement walls.
Okay. New business. We have the Rockland High School Improvement Plan and School Council, and we have Dr. Harrison joining us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, it's that time of year where we talk about the school improvement plan. Uh, thanks to the site council of Rockland High School for their contributions to this document throughout the year. Uh, also thank you to our department heads at the high school for their contributions as well. Um, this document is a team effort. It aligns to our strategic plan. What I thought I would do tonight is just go over any changes from last year. A lot of the information, especially given how the year has ended, is similar to what was last year. But there are really, I think, five key changes that reflect the, uh, time that we're educating in. And I think the first is planning a safe reentry, uh, following the COVID-19 pandemic. Really just think about operationally, what safety measures are we putting in place to keep our students and staff, um, at ease, but also comfortable coming to school every day, um, so that they feel supported. The second is really just professional development, uh, for our teachers on remote learning. And one-to-one with technology, now that they'll have Chromebooks, every student, teaching staff. How do we teach students who all have devices? What's appropriate, responsible use? Um, how do we use it to engage students, uh, to support their learning? And also doing it in a hybrid model where sometimes, uh, the kids are going to have to use the technology on their own potentially when they're not in school. The third is really tier-two interventions, which I think is something the faculty needs to explore further. Um, especially given those student absences, um, towards this end of the year. Um, not being in school and seeing our most at-risk and vulnerable populations. I think it's going to be more important than ever to come up with tier-two interventions that pull kids out of the classroom to support their learning, whether it's an academic support, whether it's supporting them with MCAS support, or even, um, small group instruction that's personalized to whatever needs they have. And that could just be English learners, that could be special ed students, that could just be students who, um, had a huge gap, uh, from the last three months. So really finding ways to support students during the school day, um, whether it's remotely or not remotely. Uh, and then fourthly, the social emotional health, that's a key area that as a faculty we need to focus on. Uh, really understanding what our students' needs are, because I'm guessing they're going to be a, a lot different than they were, uh, in March. Uh, so I think that's something we're going to have to address, especially for the students who may not have been as actively engaged in learning from March through June 12. Um, and then, and then the last thing that I think is the difference, and this is may, something we may not jump in on right away. We were supposed to do this this year. We're very excited about it. It was the creation of a, a bulldog block, which is similar to an advisory period. But it's something where we were hoping to redo our schedule so that every day, instead of a study, kids had a bulldog block where a teacher would serve in the capacity of advisor and they would be overseeing the, uh, students for four years, uh, in supporting the development of a senior capstone project. Uh, this was an idea that we've, uh, been around as a faculty. Uh, we had scheduled a subcommittee to meet this spring, uh, obviously did not meet. So we're hoping to redo it for this fall and into the winter and hopefully have a proposal for, uh, the following year, not next year, but the following year. So those are the five key changes. The rest of this document is very similar to what you've seen in previous years.
I, I, I have a, a question. Uh, there's a toss-up question. Are you maintaining attendance to Aspen?
No, we haven't been doing, um, attendance daily. Um, staff have, um, filled out a survey, um, where they're tracking student engagement, but not on a daily basis, on more of a collective basis.
Okay. So each, and that's happening in all the schools?
Yeah. Yes, the middle school is not, I don't think, tracking attendance either. I think as a parent, Tom, it's a bit hard to sort of, like, Mike, I'm the one that's home. We're home because we're working from home, but not every parent is. So they're sort of flexing around their schedule. They might not be learning every single day, five days a week. You know, they might be learning Saturday and Sunday as opposed to Monday, Tuesday.
Right.
I think, I think that's also a result, Tom, of us sort of wandering our way into this. I mean, if you remember, again, we're going home for the day, we're going home for the week, we're going home for the month. We've sort of wandered into this instead of knowing what we were going to be, uh, doing. So I think one of the things that you'll see in the fall is a much more structured, um, pro, daily attendance, grade and things like that.
Right. Yeah, it's just in my case, I, what I know, every time we contact, we have, uh, you know, whether it's electronic or, you know, telephonic or whatever type of contact, we mark it as an attendance, you know, record in Aspen for, you know, that we've, we've had contact with that student.
Yeah, that's good.
A great idea.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
No. Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Thank you for all that you are doing as well. I know that you have a lot on your plate as well. So we appreciate that work. Um, and thank you for joining us tonight. Moving on, or we probably should vote to accept that.
Vote to accept?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's the four of us. Thank you. Moving on to personal information for April and May. Do you have anything to add, Dr. Kron?
Yeah, I just want to highlight, um, Karen McKinnon is leaving us, um, as of June 30th. Um, Karen McKinnon is our ELA coach at the elementary. She's outstanding. She's done great work in the district. Um, she will be missed. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Right. She's a great lady. So she will be missed. Nothing else?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to public service announcements. Ms. Gier, your last public service announcement.
Yeah. Um, so there is a car parade for the senior class tomorrow. So we really encourage everyone to get out there and wave at us. There's also a, um, senior slideshow on. There's also a senior slideshow on Thursday night that WRPS and our class advisor have put together, so. Awesome. I'm really excited to see it. And last of all, thank you so much for having me on here. It has been awesome.
We're very lucky to have you.
You, you did a really terrific job. I've been doing this a few years now and I have to say you're one of the best students that I've ever seen represent. It's been, it's been a real pleasure.
Roger that.
I agree. I knew when we heard your name that it was going to be a good year. So thank you for joining us. I know as a high school senior, it's the last thing you'd rather be doing on a hot summer night.
Good luck on your future plans.
Thank you.
I feel bad for whoever comes next year because those are the shoes to fill.
Right.
Mike, we might like to do it.
Hey.
To go back to high school.
Did he leave?
Oh, I'm moving on.
Next, Ms. Davidson.
I just wanted to say I hope everyone's staying healthy. Maddie, thank you so much for all your dedication this year. It was a pleasure working with you and good luck in your future.
Mr. Mills?
Thank you, Maddie, for your, your assistance and your, your, and your guidance. Yesterday was Memorial Day and like no other, I mean, I, we get involved in doing a lot of flagging of graves and, you know, and it was a lot this year. So if you see a veteran and see, thank them and keep, keep those, keep those people in mind too, because they're getting lost. Thank you.
All right, Tom, and thank you for your service.
Mike.
Mr. Garafalo?
Totally stole my thunder there, Jill. Thanks. Thank you, Tom. Maddie, you're going to be missed. You know, we, we knew what we were getting and we got more than we expected. For sure. As far as I'm concerned, I know you didn't get to finish lacrosse this year. But from what I see, I'm pretty sure you're a league all-star and you're all-scholastic, so I don't care. That's what I'm picturing for your senior year for lacrosse. So I want you to move on next year to Lowell and bring that spirit. And show the Riverhawks what the Bulldogs are all about. They, they're going to, they're getting something with you, that's for sure. Good luck.
That's very sweet, Mr. Garafalo.
All the seniors. Hey, I try.
Every once in a while.
You know, even a blind squirrel finds a nut.
And I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say to the seniors tomorrow, I look forward to cheering you on and waving you on with.
Bye bye.
My wife, so. Congrats to you all.
You're good. We're going to be out there to the Maroni family. We're going to find our way, I think, towards MP because that's where it's going, close to our home. I have the pleasure to give Maddie a certificate. Can you see it? I'll brush my big head.
Yes.
I'll deliver this to you tomorrow. It is a certificate for appreciation to Madeline Gair. Thank you for your service as a Rockland School Committee Student Representative on today, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. So I want to thank you as well. You brighten up our meetings for sure. You gave us great insight to the high school and senior life. We certainly enjoyed having you here and enjoying what you had to say and we want to wish you the best in the future. You can touch, you can tell someone what you're up to and we wish you the best of everything.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I'll deliver this with your nameplate a day this week and I look forward to waving to you tomorrow.
Sweet.
All right, anyone else have anything to say? No? All right, with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, aye, that's the four of us.